Welcome to our Planning Board meeting pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Sturbridge Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen, indor wants to meet either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast, on cable television on Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at (774) 304-1455, enter (1428) for the meeting number, and (12345) for the access code. This phone number is only active for the public during the public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access, ask access, the proceedings in real time in technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post audio and/or video recordings, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. The first orders to call to order will approve the minutes of the March 23 meeting. At 6:31, we'll start with three A and Rs. We have an A and R for 566 Hayne Street, another one for 249 Brookfield Road, and a third one for 134 Lane 9. At 6:35, we'll have a continuation of the public hearing on Fisk Hill Realty Trust, requesting a definitive subdivision approval for property located at 30 Main Street and 20 Fisk Hill Road. At 6:50, we'll have a public hearing to consider the proposal to amend the Flood Plain District sections of Chapter 3 of the zoning bylaws. At 6:55, we'll hold a public hearing for special permit at 423 Main Street, STL 423 LLC, applying for a special permit and waiver of site plan to pave a parking lot. At 7:05, we'll have a public hearing to consider the proposal to renumber and revise the zoning bylaw. Following that, we'll have the town planning update and all the new business and insurance matters. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of March 23? Do you have any comments, questions, or changes?
Charlie, I have a couple.
Sure, go ahead, Dane.
On page 3, during discussion about the municipal parking lot for the benefit of the local businesses, there's a note that I stated that we don't need to do anything to change in ADA space later on, just reline. I just want to point out that they did need to make modifications to the grading plan to accommodate that, which is correctly reflected in the additional requirement on the next sheet. I just wanted that comment to be cleaned up if possible. I'd suggest that it stay, Dilevante suggested that the space be graded to accommodate a potential future ADA space and potentially restrip in the future. Following on that, number 11 on page 4, "The second parking space from Main Street on the westerly side is actually on the eastern side of the lot shall be graded to accommodate a potential additional AED space, AEB space." And in the final sentence, I don't want to harp on this item as it was in meeting, last meeting, but monitoring seems "shall monitor." I think if we state something to the effect of, "If comments are made, if town planner hears that there is a need, do I know that this was an item that you had brought up, so I'd be happy to hear your feedback on this as well." I just don't know who is doing the monitoring, who shall. I just want to clean that up a little bit.
Okay. Sue, do you have any thoughts on that, or Jean?
No, but I thank you, Dane, for bringing it up, because I was going to as well. And it really wasn't clarified in our last meeting, who would monitor the parking lot? It was just talked about. So that does need to be clarified.
From my point of view, I think it would be satisfactory if we kept an open channel. If anybody comes with comments to Jean or other town staff, the potential is always there to restrip if needed, and that way the space is otherwise covered.
Right, and I think, you know, so the permits already been issued, because we only have so many days to issue the permit with that condition. So it is a town approval. It's for a town parking lot. If we get funding, the town will be building it. So I think you're correct, Dane and Sue. We just need to keep those lines of communication open and, you know, really keep an eye on that, see if there are any comments that we receive. We have, you know, the public comments section on the website, or if any of the local businesses, we could reach out to the local businesses in the area once the parking lots opened to see if they're receiving any feedback from their patrons. So I think that we could coordinate that through myself, the town administrator, even the police department, if they start ticketing people for parking in, you know, inappropriate locations. So I think there's a variety of mechanisms we can use to keep an eye on that.
Okay. So we want to remember anybody with an active monitoring situation.
Okay, so Jane, you're all set on how to revise this, that wording?
Yes, well, so as I pointed out, the condition, the permit's already been issued. The permit does say on the easterly side, but I think that, you know, for the ongoing monitoring, you know, we could reflect that in this evening's meeting minutes, that we spoke about the monitoring again, and that those were the suggested ways to monitor. That way it's documented.
All right, that sounds good. Any other changes, comments, questions? If not, do we have a motion then to approve the minutes as amended?
So move, Dane.
Thank you, Dane. Second?
Sue, second.
Thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a request for determination of approval not required for 566 Hayne Street Route 15 from Silver Tree Realty. Jane, do you want to go over that?
Yeah, I'm just going to give Janay control here so she can bring the plan up. There we go. And so this is another plan for Silver Tree Realty, and this is carving off Lot 6, which has sufficient frontage, and the remaining land has sufficient frontage as well. So since the plan meets the requirements, I would recommend the board endorse the plan as submitted.
Very good. Do we have any questions or comments? If not, I'll take a motion to sign the A and R.
I'll move, Jeff.
Okay, Jeff, thank you. Second? Second, Chris. Okay, Chris, thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Oh, good, and I vote yes. Very good. Okay, the next A and R is 249 Brookfield Road, Catwood Property Management LLC. Jane, do you want to bring that up and go over that?
Yeah, so the plan is up on the screen, and this is carving off lots 101 and 102 from the house property, the lower down one. There you go. So as you can see, there's an existing house on the property, and Mr. Bo is carving off two lots off of this one tract of land, and all the parcels meet the frontage requirements. So I would recommend the board endorse the plan submitted.
Any questions or comments? If not, we'll take a motion then to sign the A and R. So move, Chris.
Second, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, yes, and Jeff? I can hear Jeff saying, Jeff, thank you, and I vote yes. Very good. Okay, the last thing now we have this evening is for 134 Lane 9. Randy Burcium is requesting that.
Yes, so this plan was submitted. Lucy and Bill Lemke are the property owners. Randy Burcium is the applicant, and the Lemkes are carving off Lot 2 to be conveyed to the Burciums. Lot 2 has frontage on a private way, Lane 9, as does the Lemkes' portion that they're retaining, that's called Lot 1 on your property. And the Lot 2 also has quite a bit of frontage on New Boston Road as well. So since the plan meets the requirements, I would recommend the board endorse the plan submitted.
Very good, thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, we'll take a motion then to sign the A and R.
I'll move, Sue.
Thank you, Sue. Second?
Second, Mike.
Okay, Mike, thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. Okay, very good. Let's see, it's past 6:35, so we will have the continuation of the public hearing for Fisk Hill East Realty Trust, requesting a definitive subdivision for property located at 30 Main Street and 20 Fisk Hill Road. Does Sue have to read this notice, or is it just?
No, we don't need to, because it's continuation.
Okay, Jane, do you want to give us an update on that?
Yeah, so actually, we have Peter Engel from McClure Engineering with us this evening, and he's going to provide us an update of where they are with the conservation issues that they were sorting out, and they've already also begun the meet and review, and they've had a meeting with Mass DOT, so Pete will give us an update, and then we'll be recommending that the public hearing be continued until May 25 at 6:35.
Okay. Thanks, Jane. So like Jane said, we went through the meet process. We filed a ENF with MIPA for the.
Pete, we really can't hear you, Pete.
Is that any better?
That's better.
Yeah. All right, so we filed a ENF with MIPA for the full potential buildout of that subdivision. We did get a MIPA certificate back stating that no further environmental review is necessary on their part. So that takes care of the MIPA portions. We're still working through the conservation matters with the vernal pools on site. One is off, or a potential vernal pool is off-site, which I think has been deemed not a vernal pool, but not officially, but the potential vernal pool on-site has been deemed an actual vernal pool. We are in the process of surveying the limits of that vernal pool and adding those to the plan, as well as revising the plans for the rest of those conservation comments, as well as the peer review comments. And like Jane said, we got our first 25% review comments back from DOT today, which we will begin going through and incorporating into the plans as well. So hopefully, in the next two to three weeks or so, we can have some revised plans back into the town and get those re-reviewed, so we can move forward.
Okay. Very good. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that? Okay, so could I have a motion then to continue this? Oh, do you want to see if the public has any comments?
Yes.
I, yes, I have a question or comment.
Are there any, and is there anyone on the line who would like to make comment on the continuation of Fisk Hill subdivision?
I, I have a question.
Can you please state your name?
Robert Barnes, 42 Fisk Hill Road.
Janay, can you turn that up?
Yep. All right, you can talk.
And my, my question, I have a couple of questions, I think, and we're mostly concerned about the effect, the negative effect on the safety of the traffic. And at the next hearing, will the traffic study be discussed?
Yes, Mr. Barnes, it should be. Once we have the revised plans, our peer reviewer has requested some additional information from the traffic engineer for the applicant, and then the peer reviewer will review that again on behalf of the town. We have relayed your concerns to the peer reviewer as well, and he will be present at the next hearing, unless, of course, for some reason, we don't get the revised plans in time and it needs to be continued again.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else, Mr. Barnes?
Not at this time, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make comments on this public hearing?
All right, and any other comments or questions from the board? If not, could we have a motion then to continue this public hearing until May 25 at 6:35 PM?
I'll move, Dane.
Dane, thank you. Second?
Sue.
Sue, thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. Okay, it is past 6:55, so now we have a public hearing for a special permit at 423 Main Street, applying for a special permit and waiver of site plan to pave a parking lot. So Sue, would you like to read the public hearing notice on that?
In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing virtually on Tuesday, April 13, 2021, at 6:55 PM, in the application of STL 423 LLC, at 423 Main Street, Sturbridge Math. The applicant requests a special permit pursuant to Chapter 16, Section 16.06(c)(6) of the zoning bylaw for parking lot paving in excess of 2,500 square feet impervious located at 423 Main Street, Sturbridge Math.
Very good, thank you. Jane, do you want to give us an update on this?
Yes, so with us this evening, we have Matt St. Laurent and Michael Andrade of Graves Engineering. Matt is the property owner and developer. And the board will recall, this is the property that is next to Dr. Restrepo's office, that's in the process of being renovated now into the four live-work studios in one residential unit. And at the time, the St. Laurent family came to the Planning Board for approval, they did not have their plans done for a notice of intent for paving of the parking lot, so it was decided that should be done at a later date. So they're well into the renovations, and they're hoping to pave the parking lot a little later this week. Since the property is located in a groundwater protection district, the board needs to issue a special permit to do so. That permit must be issued after hearing comment or no opposition from the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, and the Conservation Commission. So the Conservation Commission has approved this project and issued an order of conditions. And at the last Board of Selectmen's meeting, myself, Mr. St. Laurent, and Mr. Andrade attended that meeting, and the board, excuse me, at that time voted that they had no concerns with the proposed project. Also, the Board of Health has no concerns with this proposed project. So I'm not sure if you have any questions from Mr. Andrade on the stormwater management system and how that complies with the groundwater protection district, but I am recommending approval of this permit to pave this evening. And with that, I guess, Michael, if you would just like to give a little overview of?
I have 6:50 now.
Very good, yeah, we have 6:50. So, does anyone have any questions before we do that on Jane's report? Okay, so, uh, we have now a public hearing to consider the proposal to amend the floodplain district sections of Chapter 3 of the zoning bylaws. Sue, do you want to read the public notice?
In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Sturbridge Planning Board will hold a public hearing virtually on Tuesday, April 13th at 6:50 to consider amendments to the town's zoning bylaw as petitioned by the planning board. The proposed are amendments to the floodplain district sections of Chapter 3. The amendments include the addition of floodplain districts as an overlay district to Section 3.01, the addition of floodplain district definitions to Section 3.11, moving the propose, the purpose of the floodplain district language concerning establishing the floodplain district as an overlay, updating the language and eliminating current language, amend Section 3.13 to language concerning establishing the floodplain district as an overlay district, inserting Section 3.15.1, designation of community floodplain administrator, Section 3.15.2, permits are required for all proposed development in the floodplain overlay district, Section 3.15.3, assure that all necessary permits are obtained, Section 3.15.4, variances to building codes floodplain standards, Section 3.15.5, variances to local zoning bylaws related to community compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program, replace the current language in Section 3.17C with new language regarding water courses, eliminate Section 3.17E, Section 3.17I, Section 3.17L1, and insert subsection subdivision proposals, unnumbered A-zone and AO and AH zones drainage requirements to Section 3.17, insert Section 3.18.1 recreational vehicles, insert 3.2, requirements to submit new, um, technical data, Section 3.21, abrogation and greater restriction section, Section 3.22 disclaimer of liability, and Section 3.23 severability section. The planning board has elected, consistent with the Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law to hold this public hearing virtually.
Sue, that was a great job. That was probably one of the most detailed public hearing notes that I've heard.
It sure was. And if people want to look it up, they can.
Hey, John. Thank you very much, Sue. Thank you. You want to see if you can follow up with that?
I can actually. Sue's done my job by reading the notice because she has gone through all the sections. We, there was no real easy way to figure out how to summarize this in the legal notice, so Janay just put everything in it. So, as the board is aware, the, uh, state National Floodplain Coordinator and Deputy Hazard Mitigation Officer has been in the process of reviewing all of the floodplain bylaws for every city and town in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They realized that some were kind of falling behind the times, and we had updated ours, I believe, in 2011, but there have been more changes to the federal statutes and state requirements since then. So, ours was one of the lucky communities that got done pretty quickly. I was able to work with her as we were going through the codification process, and so all of those sections that Sue just read will be updated in our zoning bylaw per her recommendation. We've already submitted the warrant, potential warrant article to the town administrator for inclusion on the town meeting warrant, and I don't know if you need any more detailed description of this. We have put it out on the website, we've put copies in the town clerk's office, and, you know, notified everybody as required of this proposal. So, I don't know if you have any questions, or if you don't, I would just recommend that the board support the proposed revisions to Chapter 3. Article 3 will actually be the new numbering after codification, and to provide this recommendation to the town administrator for inclusion on the warrant and at the annual town meeting as part of your report.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions or comments? If not, could, uh, we have a motion then to support the proposed revisions as Jane explained?
Charlie, we should check the line.
Oh, yeah, very good idea.
Is there anyone on the line that would like to make comment on the public hearing regarding changings, changes to the floodplain bylaw?
There's no one there, Charlie.
Okay, great. Would someone like to make that motion? Well, first, we should close the public hearing, I guess. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Thank you, Sue.
Second, Chris.
Thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. So then, Jane, we do need a motion there to support this as we requested?
That's correct.
Okay. Somebody could make that motion?
No move.
Thank you, Sue. Second?
Second, Dane.
Okay, thank you. Chris or Dane? Very good. Um, Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Very good. Okay, it is past 6:55. So now we have a public hearing for a special permit at 423 Main Street. It is applied for a special permit and waiver of site plan to pave the parking lot. So, Sue, would you like to read the, uh, public hearing notice on that?
Sure. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the planning board will hold a public hearing virtually on Tuesday, April 13th, 2021, at 5:50 PM, in the application of STL 423 LLC, at 423 Main Street Sturbridge Math. The applicant requests a special permit pursuant to Chapter 16, Section 16.06C6 of the zoning bylaw for parking lot paving in excess of 2,500 square feet impervious located at 423 Main Street Sturbridge Math.
Very good. Thank you. Jane, do you want to give us an update on this?
Yes, so with us this evening, we have Matt St. Laurent and Michael Andrade of Graves Engineering. Matt is the property owner and developer. And the board will recall, this is the property that is next to Dr. Restrepo's office that's in the process of being renovated now into the four live-work studios in one residential unit. And at the time, the St. Laurent family came to the planning board for approval, they did not have their plans done for a notice of intent for paving of the parking lot, so it was decided that should be done at a later date. So, they're well into the renovations, and they're hoping to pave the parking lot a little later this week. Since the property is located in a groundwater protection district, the board needs to issue a special permit to do so. That permit must be issued after hearing comment or no opposition from the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, and the Conservation Commission. So, the Conservation Commission has approved this project and issued an order of conditions. And at the last Board of Selectmen's meeting, myself, Mr. St. Laurent, and Mr. Andrade attended that meeting, and the board, excuse me, at that time voted that they had no concerns with the proposed project. Also, the Board of Health has no concerns with this proposed project. So, I'm not sure if you have any questions from Mr. Andrade on the stormwater management system and how that complies with the groundwater protection district, but I am recommending approval of this permit to pave this evening. And with that, I guess, Michael, if you would just like to give a little overview of the groundwater, or, excuse me, the stormwater management system that you've designed for the property?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, so, um, I, I'm assuming you can all see the plan on screen there. Basically, what we've done is, um, designed a bio-retention area to collect all the runoff from the parking lot, basically all the way from Main Street back through where the parking is itself. And that sheet that's up right now doesn't show, uh, the bio-retention area itself, um, but it's sort of in a corner there behind a dumpster. Uh, so all the runoff from the site passes through a sediment for bay, then into the, um, maybe if you go the other way, Orb is controlling that. Yep, there you go. So that kind of kidney-shaped, um, feature is the bio-retention area. So that collects and treats all the stormwater, there's plantings in there, in a soil media that treats it, and any overflow passes through a spillway and down the slope, um, to the wetland and stream below. Um, so that's, um, that's the stormwater system, there's no catch basins, it's all surface runoff to that bio-retention area, um, sort of a country drainage type of system.
I should also-
Very good. Thank you.
Sorry, Charlie, I should also mention that, in this case, since the application went to the Conservation Commission first, they served as the Stormwater Authority and have reviewed and approved the stormwater management system as well.
Very good. Thank you. Does any member of the board have any questions or comments? If not, Jane, do you want to see if any from the public is interested in making comment?
Is there anyone on the line that would like to make comment on the special permit for 423 Main Street?
We have no one on the line.
Okay, great. So then, Jane has recommended that we, uh, the planning board do vote, uh, does vote to approve the special permit and waiver of site plan, and to allow the parking lot at, uh, 423 Main Street to be paved as proposed. Can we have such a motion?
No move, Dane.
Thank you, Dane. Second?
Second, Sue.
Okay, Chris or Sue? Thank you. Very good, Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. Thank you very much. Good luck. The building really looks beautiful. You've done a great job on it.
I can't take any credit, but thank you. I'll pass it on to the owner.
Well, you're part of the team.
Thank you, Jane.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Okay, and we have a few minutes. It's 7:05. Yeah, I think you finished with your, um, planners update?
Um, I did. I can, I can give you a little more information on some of the COVID approvals that we're working with. So, pretty much everyone-
Oh, good.
-that I've reached out to that had tents or outdoor dining last year intends to do something this year. So, for example, Sturbridge Seafood is having a tent, but it will be about half the size because they learned last year, as the weather started getting really hot, they were getting less people that really wanted to sit outside there, and more people were choosing to sit in with the air conditioning. But, everybody, the consensus generally is with everyone that even post-COVID, that outdoor dining is probably an option that they're going to want to be able to have going forward, seasonal. So I really think that we'll need to work with the Board of Selectmen and the planning board to figure out what an appropriate process may be. It may be, in my mind, having everyone come in as Sawdust Cafe is coming, that's a little extreme situation. He built this, a beautiful patio, but maybe having everybody that wants to have a tent or an outdoor dining spot come in for even a waiver of site plan, to get that plan on file, looked at by everybody, and then the biggest issue will be, what do they do with the change of premise to be able to serve alcohol outside? So there has been a little bit of chatter that the ABCC may make some changes to allow it to be a little easier. What they've done during COVID is they've allowed the Board of Selectmen to be able to issue that approval. So, we'll have to stay tuned to see what they do, but I'm at least trying to reach out to everybody, see what their plans are, and like I said, anyone that's built a space, trying to get them to come in before the planning board, and then back before the Board of Selectmen and the ABCC to get that license changed.
Well, it sounds very good, Jane. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have 7:05. So, uh, the next public hearing is to consider the proposal to re-number and revise the zoning bylaw. Uh, Sue, do you want to read the, uh, notice on that?
Sure. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the planning, the Sturbridge Planning Board will hold a public hearing virtually on Tuesday, April 13th at 7:05 PM, to consider amendments to the town's zoning bylaw as petitioned by the planning board.
Very good. And Jane, do you want to go over that?
Yes, so this is the year-long project that we've been working on, and it's really to re-number our zoning bylaw, our charter, our general bylaws, and even all of our rules and regulations in a consistent manner of numbering, and to clean up the language so that terms used are consistent throughout, and so that sections of, for instance, the zoning bylaw and the general bylaw that talk about each other are speaking the same language, so to speak. So, late this afternoon, I went through, um, each page of the codification document, and I sent you all a Word document, you may not have had a chance to look at it, but really, what I wanted to show was that there are really no significant language changes in this codification. I didn't want the public watching at home, or anybody going to town meeting thinking, geez, what is going in, you know, what did they really do with this codification? So really, what's happened is we've cleaned up a variety of grammatical issues, changed some words for consistency, and updated sections so that they refer to the new numbering system. And also, it seems like everywhere we're, we had a word hyphenated, uh, General Code removed the hyphen, so many, many of the changes are just removing a hyphen from that text. There is one issue that I didn't catch until I was doing this this evening, so I'm glad I did it, is for our drive-through, drive-through, T-H-R-U, which is like drive-through window, she's gone through and changed everything to through, T-H-R-O-U-G-H, and I'm recommending we go back to through, because if I'm going to McDonald's, I'm going through the drive-through, T-H-R-U. So there's probably 50 instances that that was the change, to change it. So, if the board agrees, I will go back and make that T-H-R-U throughout the document. So, really, as I said, nothing of substance. Um, there were small things, like in the charter, our building inspector is called a building inspector, and in our zoning bylaw, in some places it was called building commissioner, some places it was called inspector of buildings. So we've changed those titles to be consistent with the charter, and that's really about it. Nothing, you know, nothing huge, just a lot of cleanup, and hopefully, if this gets passed at town meeting, it'll be up on the website in this new order, easy to find things, very searchable, able to request copies of things directly from General Code if you would like to. So, in all, I think it, it will be a, an improvement as to the variety of PDFs that are on the website as people look. Our zoning bylaw is very organized online, but not all of the bylaws are that organized, so this will change that.
Right, as Jane mentioned, this General Code E360 is really a nice feature. A lot of communities have, uh, adopted that, and I'd, I'd also have to point out that Jane really, um, took this on to do all the work that was required, to get it into the form that was required to allow that General Code to go forward, and, um, it really does make a big difference. I had an opportunity, you know, this week where I had to, you know, check on a community to see whether or not they had, uh, accepted a certain general law, and within minutes of the person asking me about it, I was able to go on their website and find it right away. So, I mean, it is really a great feature that people will be able to use to get through our whole, uh, you know, zoning bylaws, all our regulations, and, and all of our codes. So, um, it, it's going to be a real improvement, and again, you know, Jane has done a tremendous job in making this thing happen. Um, any other questions or comments on it? Do we want to see if there's anyone from the public that would like to make any questions?
Well, Janay's checking that. I'll just mention one other thing. After the annual town meeting, after the codification article passes, we will need to hold a public hearing to update our subdivision regulations, our rules and regulations, but we'll hold off on doing that until after the town meeting. Uh, I would guess we'll have that hearing in July.
Good.
Is there anyone on the line that has comment regarding the public hearing to consider a proposal to re-number and revise the zoning bylaws?
There's no one on the line.
Sue, did you have a question, or?
Yes, I did. It will be after this vote.
Okay.
We can just close this. Yes.
All right, great. Do we have a motion then to, oh, anyone else have any comments? If not, will, uh, a motion then to close the public hearing?
No moves, Mike.
Okay, Mike, thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Okay, so then the motion, uh, as Jane points out here, would be, um, to support the proposed recodification of the zoning bylaw and to provide the recommendation at the annual town meeting. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Okay. Sue, do we have a question? Dane, thank you. Was the question now, Sue, or did you want to wait for the end of the vote?
No, let's finish, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, so Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Very good. Okay, um, should I go into old and new business, or is your question separate from that?
Oh, old and new would be fine. Thank you.
Okay, great. We'll move on to old and new business. Sue, do you have any old or new business?
Yes, I do.
All right.
I, I have some new business. I think it's new, it's, it'll be new to me. I understand there are plans for, um, someone to take over the Friendly, Friendly's building. Um, is that accurate? And if so, what?
Well, we don't know. Um, so they, there is a tentative agreement, a purchase and sale, and old Stur, and the reason I know this is because it is in their documents that Old Sturbridge Village has the right of first refusal when there's an offer to purchase that building. So, Old Sturbridge Village actually reached out to me and said, we got, noticed that there was an offer to purchase. So we reached out to the realtor who's handling the sale, and they were under a confidentiality agreement and could not let us know. The only thing they could say was it was a proposed restaurant use, and that they were still trying to work out the terms and the financing. So I'm hopeful that it will be a proposed restaurant use, and that we'll know more details, I'm guessing, after the party secures their financing and they, you know, move forward with a closing date, then we'll get some more information. But right now, I, I have nothing.
Okay, Sue. Anything else, Sue, or?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Yeah, no, I just have one quick question. Uh, Sue, I, I think I read in one of your emails that for the next meeting, we'll be back, uh, in person. Did I read that correctly?
Yes, so-
Not Sue, I'm sorry, Jane.
Yeah, so, so what's proposed?
Uh-
The Board of Selectmen at the last meeting actually came into Town Hall and met, and they, what they did is they spaced all of their seats far enough apart to maintain social distancing, and then applicants or anyone else that needed to attend the meeting was, was virtual, so they are not able to come into the building. So, over the next week, we're going to try to come up with a configuration upstairs here to allow nine people, or at least the seven of you, to distance from each other, and Janay and I, we've been in the same pod for a very long time now. So, that is the hope, is that, you know, we'll be able to come back, and at least all of you can be in the same room together. If anyone has a concern with that, I guess, reach out to me, and we'll see how we can arrange things differently. Or I guess if anyone has a concern with-
Just be at Town Hall?
Pardon?
Just be at Town Hall or in Center Hall?
Town Hall, because it's much larger over here. Center office is just too small to be able to get the distancing, get people on camera, too. So I think over here, we'll use the Board of Selectmen's desk, their table, and then maybe create a horseshoe so that we kind of come around this way and space you all apart. And I think as long as, I mean, my back and Janay's back could be to the camera, that wouldn't really matter, as long as the people watching could see the board members.
Does anyone have any concerns about meeting in person, or?
I'm personally not super excited about it until I'm vaccinated.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so we could hopefully make arrangements, have somebody remade remote if they wanted to, Jane?
Yeah, yeah. I will, uh, work out the details in the next coming week. Is there anybody else that has a concern with coming in? It would help me to know who might be coming and who might be staying home.
I have a concern.
Okay. Sue, Dane, anybody else?
I, I, the only thing I probably have to do, I think I might have to clear it with my employer, just because we have employment restrictions right now with COVID, um, but otherwise, that, that would be fun.
Who's-
Okay.
Mike?
So if it's an issue, it turns out that three people aren't going to be, maybe we could hold off until later on, but we can-
Yeah.
-look at that, Jane, I think.
Sure, I, I think you're right. I think if three people are going to, you know, um, log in from home, then maybe it makes sense to hold off a little while longer until more people are comfortable, because it does probably make sense to have four of you here and three of you at home.
No, it doesn't do the same.
Yeah.
Okay.
So-
All right, we'll, we'll, certainly in time for the next meeting, we'll understand what the plans are.
All right. So I guess I would say to, oops, sorry, Charlie, I was going to say to the, to the three of you that are not comfortable coming in, I'll just, I'll leave it up to you to kind of reach out to me and let me know when, you know, when you think you might be comfortable, and then we'll try to figure out where we go from here, so.
I'm hoping to get vaccinated as soon as possible, so as soon as that happens, I'm there.
Okay, great.
Great.
All right. And then Mike will check with his employee.
Go get the J and J.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Chris, you have any other, uh, old or new business?
Uh, nope, also.
Dane?
Uh, I have two quick questions. Um, on the agenda today, we had a very long, but very well-read, Sue, um, conversation, followed by an applicant and their representation. Is there any way in the future to do that the other way around, so we can have some of these in-depth conversations about codification after everybody else has had their site plan, et cetera?
Well, we try that, but the issue is sometimes something's already been sent to the paper before we knew an application was coming in, and that's what happened with 423. I always try to put-
That's what I-
-people first in our business last, but if you remember, the, the floodplain bylaw should have been heard at the last meeting, and the paper forgot to publish the notice. So they moved the notice to this time slot, and that's when it went in. So, we kind of were forced to have STL after that, but that's not what we like to do.
Perfect, that, I'm sure that's, okay, that's exactly what I'd assumed. Thank you. The only other one is on the groundwater protection district. Does anybody else think that there's a lot of sign-offs that need to happen for that? Is that, there's like a lot, every single person has to sign off on this thing?
Yeah, and I, I would, I'd like to weigh in on that. That's something I was thinking about over the, you know, we started with 420 Main with the pavement, and then with this, so anything that's 2,500 square feet or over, and the entire commercial tourist district is in the groundwater protection district. It just seems like, you know, maybe it's a little too stringent, and that might be something that we need to look at. I think for the most part, those properties are all developed, so if it's redevelopment or repavement, it doesn't apply, but if it's new pavement or new impervious, then it does apply. So, yeah, I think that's, I'm open to having that conversation. I don't know how anyone else feels.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good point. I mean, when you look at some of these small areas, and it's- and it's such a large groundwater protection area, I think the only thing you'd have to be careful of is what's in the state law about these districts? Because I'm sure when it was first put in, the wording was, you know, consistent with what's required, you know, to establish these districts. So if there is a way to modify it because of the existing, you know, development in that area, then certainly we could maybe try to make it a little easier to deal with.
Yeah, I am a civil and environmental engineer by training and I am the first one to dig into these stormwater issues. You guys have all patiently listened to me, asked too many questions. So I definitely have a lot of sympathy for the groundwater protection itself. I'm just thinking about the onerous effort for all of these approvals from the applicants. And I'm sure we can still protect the environment with a little less paperwork.
Good, good point.
And Dane, you've taught us all a lot. So you were never, you never offered too much. Keep it up.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you. All set then, Dane?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Mike?
Uh, you don't have anything, no.
Okay, Jeff?
Nothing.
Okay, and I'm all set. I think I don't have anything else either. So unless there's anything else, we'll have a motion then to adjourn?
No move. Sue?
Sue? Second? Dane, thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. Have a good evening.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night.